Okay, we're now back in session. Would you like to wait for your colleague? Okay, so maybe we wait a minute. I'm gonna go see where he is.
I can go first.
Okay, so now we're moving on to our next item, item number 21. I'll hand it over to, who would like to kick us off? Supervisor Gary?
Yes, thank you Chair. In light of insightful feedback from several of our community partners, I would like to introduce an amendment to our item. It was always our intention to ensure that engagement with community partners as well as opportunities for service quality improvements were a centerpiece of the efforts of this ad hoc committee. But we just have a few modifications that will, I think, enhance the language of our amendment. Now that you'll see it on the screen, it adds, not major changes, we just add in red in the first paragraph, well, the first item number one, you'll see, we added the language of improved service delivery, quality received. And then, we want our enhancements to also focus on advancing equity, community sustainability, and responsible labor standards. So, just wanted to put that on the screen for you to consider, and I'll turn it over to Supervisor Gary.
No need to consider, I accept those amendments. And I like to make a motion in support of what's been presented.
Thank you very much. Why don't we take a moment so everyone can read it?
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
And I have, I want to introduce the item and then we can move along. So, first and foremost, I want to thank Supervisor Anderson for his partnership on this letter. Since taking office in July, our board has been working proactively to prepare for significant federal and state budget changes that could directly impact the county, including, as you mentioned earlier Chair, an estimated $300 million annual funding gap. These cuts will severely erode the county's ability to provide vital services related to healthcare, food, and housing needs of our residents. For District 1, the stakes are especially high. We have the largest number of Medi-Cal and CalFresh recipients in the county, which means any disruption to healthcare, food assistance, or housing support will hit our communities first and hardest. These are working families, seniors, and children who cannot afford to lose the services that keep them healthy and secure. We've already taken responsible steps like updating our reserves policy and launching the Subcommittee on Sustainable Fiscal Planning to strengthen our state safety net and protect the most vulnerable. Today's item builds on that work. The county spends $2.2 billion every year through contracts. With the challenges ahead, we have a duty to make sure that every public dollar is delivering real value for San Diegans. That's why Supervisor Anderson and I are proposing this ad hoc Subcommittee on Fiscal Transparency and Accountability. Our goal is not to disrupt services or take a sledgehammer to contracts. Our goal is to take a scalpel and carefully examine where we can save money, improve performance, and strengthen service delivery. We'll be focused on three simple questions. Are we getting our money's worth? We need clear measurable performance standards and real accountability. Are services actually meeting community needs? If a contractor is struggling, we want to understand why and support improvements. But we also need to be honest that some services may need to be in source, and we should not be afraid of that conversation if it means better service, more stability, or greater value for taxpayers. Are local, excuse me, local businesses and nonprofits getting a fair shot? When local organizations win contracts, it creates jobs, strengthens our economy, and helps reinvest taxpayer dollars back into our neighborhoods. I want to acknowledge Vice Chair Monica Montgomery-Steps, who has led the county's work to make procurement more accessible for small and local businesses, including social equity enterprises. This Subcommittee will be in alignment with that important work. At the end of the day, this effort is about more than saving money. It's about protecting essential services, being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, and making sure San Diegans, especially in District 1, get the high-quality support that they deserve. So with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues for their support.
Ma'am Chair, if I may comment after the public speaks.
Sure. I just wanna, I know we're gonna go to public comment, I just wanna say, I'm happy to support, really appreciate the amendment. And I think the more that we can do to identify ways in which putting, we're putting our taxpayer dollars to the best use for our community, I think the better we're doing our job. So, thank you, and I thought the amendment was very clarifying.
I may not have to speak after you just said that.
Go ahead.
Oh, no public comment?
No, we will. I just, I just had to say my piece, but yes.
I thought I'd wait till after.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you Chair Lawson-Ramer. We have 15 requests to speak on this item, six in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received two ecomments, one in support and one neutral comment. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 21 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Because there are 10 or more speakers on the side of me, you'll have one minute to address the board. And I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'll call for the first three individuals, Marissa Bell, Cesar Javier, and allegedly Adra. If I've called your name, please come forward.
Good afternoon, I'm Marissa Bell, President of SEIU's African-American affinity group Afram-Sankofa, a proud SEIU local 221 union member and county employee of 14 years. I currently work as in, with the Aging and Independence as an Adult Protective Services Specialist, and we work in conjunction with the Aging Program Specialists. We have a call center, and our call center requires 24-hour coverage. Although we have trained county workers that are willing and able to provide this coverage, our, their jobs are contracted out. And this causes mistakes, errors, all kinds of things, increased workload for frontline staff and everything. And the contractors are never held accountable. So, we just ask that, although we'd rather, we'd rather the county invest in its employees to prioritize building its workforce, we do support this item, and we just ask that the contractors be fully vetted and held to the same standards as the county workers. Thank you Paloma and Joel for bringing this item forward, and we urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Cesar and Purita. We volunteer to help. You need help. You need our help. We work together, as envisioned in the Constitution. Savings, what does it mean? Saving means, we can never defeat nature, but we can protect us. Saving for this kind of rarity. Surprise. Saving means too. Let's be continuously planning. Are we overdeveloped physically, and we forget something very important? Victims of pollution, victims of crime, victims of flood, victims of fire, victims of injustice. Thank you on Kersam.
Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in person. Natalie Raschke, Eileen Bratton, and John Brady.
You guys are funny, more like gatekeepers to transparency and accountability. Bien vendida, Elizabeth. Welcome. I meant her instead of Kimberly, since Kimberly's gone now. One by one, they all go. Anywho, yes, anything you guys are doing to pretend to bring transparency and accountability is a joke. Because you guys refuse to report things like SNAP benefits and different things, and then you're wondering why the federal government wants to hold funding. So, anything that you guys are doing here is going to further impede the ability for people to have anything come their way that is beneficial to the people. We pay you to basically keep us in a perpetual state of chaos so that you can offer solutions. You're like, I'm gonna take your home so I can give you government-funded housing. It's very sad to see all of the things you guys do, and people believe that this is going to bring transparency and accountability, but it isn't. It's going to do anything but that, like everything else you guys do. You're wolf in sheep's clothing.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Eileen Bratton. Again, 26 and a half years with the county in public mental health and proud SEIU member. We support the formation of an ad hoc Subcommittee on Fiscal Transparency and Accountability. While the Subcommittee can be helpful, we want to ensure that workers' voices are centered and the county prioritizes building its own workforce. This Subcommittee needs to prioritize strengthening accountability around county contracts and must be fully vetted and held to the same standards as county workers. Too many times, low wages and reliance on lower-qualified candidates, including a lot of interns, makes these programs look appealing financially but do not lead to the services needed by the vulnerable communities that they serve. When contractors are not held accountable to the same styling, quality of standards that county workers have, people suffer in the community. Contractors are to create extra work because often duplicating services that are already provided by the county, including administrative.
Thank you.
Final call for Natalie Raschke and John Brady. Not seeing those individuals in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we'll start with our first caller.
Paula Bold. A small step in the right direction, but get rid of the buzzwords in the title. And it's still them, you guys who voted to transfer emergency funds for emergency services. Why do we need another politicized Subcommittee? How about just hiring an independent auditor to do work like auditing homeless spending or departments which have multiple perps, like child welfare or child protective services, and a lot of other departments waste money right and left, JD contracts and services. Independent means that they're a lot less likely to cover up for their friends or people they have lunch with every day. I know you'd save a lot in damages and legal fees. As I was saying, it sounds to me like you'd rather have another audit, grand jury indictment, or...
Hear from the next caller.
Con suelo. So, let's see, every time there's a problem, the response is to create another layer of politics instead of bringing in someone who can actually dig into the numbers. If you, if they were serious about savings or accountability, they'd bring in an independent auditor. Someone who doesn't eat at the same table, as Paul mentioned, who doesn't share the same office friendships, and who isn't invested in protecting anyone's reputation. Someone who could look at where the money is actually going. Homeless spending, child welfare, CPS, all the departments that magically avoid scrutiny year after year. But everyone here knows why that won't happen. You can't have an honest investigation when the government is investigating itself. That's exactly what always happens. So, and it's not lost on the public that the same people pushing this are the same ones who voted to move emergency funds away from the true emergency services. That decision alone shows why...
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
It's truth. How many ad hocks are there? Why is this the most bureaucratic board in the county? Why would the county add unlawful equity to its policies when it just whined about federal cuts? Sandeg did the right thing by removing such unlawful racist policies. Let's be real, responsible labor standards means giving the political union grifters bonuses from our tax hours as a quid pro quo kickback for funding grifters like Manuela's campaign. Never enough money. Fiscal transparency from debt-digger Manuela, what communist county is this? The only way the county could advance community is by locking Manuela up in prison for fraud. Why are only Jim and we, the people, interested in transparency with how our tax dollars are being spent? Why is it that the three wannabe queens have been demanding more of our tax dollars in the form of new taxes? An independent audit is overdue on the entire $8 billion county budget. The homelessness response has been an utter failure. There's been too many sole-source contracts. The reinvestment dollars are spent in the dark with no public process. Who's been given our money? Why? What's the goal? And the metrics? What's the long-term plan? People like Manuela are not gonna fix anything, never have.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon Supervisors, my name is Karina Pugh. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm speaking in support of this item on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. We support this effort to increase fiscal transparency and ensure that county contracting decisions are in the best interest of our community. San Diegans deserve to receive services from their government entities that prioritize quality, equity, and accountability. This can be impacted by contracted-out public services. However, this opportunity will re-center service quality and accountability and explore whether bringing work back in-house would better serve San Diegans. Please use this process to not only find savings, but to build a county that continues to prioritize our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Good afternoon Supervisors, my name is Noah Yiyik. I'm a researcher and policy advocate with Centaur Policy Initiatives and a convener of the Community Budget Alliance. We support this effort to strengthen fiscal transparency and to ensure that county contracting decisions are guided first and foremost by service quality, equity, accountability, and the impact on county workers and residents. Contracting out public services often results in lower quality services for San Diegans, weaker oversight, and less transparency. When work moves outside the county, it becomes harder for the public to demand transparency, harder to ensure equity, and harder to guarantee that San Diegans' dollars are being used to truly meet people's needs. As you review county contracts, we urge you to center service quality and accountability and to evaluate whether bringing work back in-house would better serve residents. County jobs provide stability, stronger oversight, and better alignment with community needs. These outcomes are often harder to achieve through subcontracting. Please use this process not just to find savings, but to build a more just, community-centered county that puts service quality and the well-being of workers and residents first. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Lawson-Ramer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you Ma'am Chair. My constituents expect me to work across party lines and with my colleagues to solve the problems that they're facing in our district. And I want to thank Supervisor Aguirre for partnering with me on this, on this board letter, and working so hard to make it the best board letter. And I thank you for the amendments, because that does make it even better. But I think that my focus has always been to make government as effective, efficient, and as accountable as possible with the best government policies. And I think that this Subcommittee will give us that opportunity to bring a higher-quality product at perhaps a lower price. And we have outstanding county employees who do wonderful things each and every day. But sometimes, we have to look at the policies that we're using. And I don't want to sound negative, but it took me five years to get a parking lot situated on county land, and that was lost revenue for all those years that we couldn't get it placed. Simple things like that are a million here, a million there, 100,000, or 10 million. If we can discover those things and change those policies so that we can free up our employees' creativity and allow them to be the best employee possible. But right now, we have glass ceilings on some of our policies that are limiting what they can do. And I think that this is gonna give us another set of eyes. And I think that if down the road, additional revenues required, we can at least look in the mirror and say, we did everything in our power to make sure we didn't have to change the revenue. So, with that, I urge my colleagues respectfully to vote aye.
Thank you so much Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Montgomery-Steps.
Let me first start by thanking Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Aguirre for bringing this forward. I do believe the work of this proposed Subcommittee is prudent and very timely, especially with the potential impacts to the county resulting from both federal and state actions. And as we've seen coming down the pipeline, the county could be responsible for tens of millions in increased costs related to healthcare, food, and the housing needs of our community. So, I do think that this is sensible to review our county contracts to determine if we can reduce costs or increase revenues elsewhere. But I also appreciate the amendments and the community members and organizations for looking into this and kind of adding a little bit to it. I've always been extremely interested in all of our contracts, but especially when I hear our employees speak of those county contracts that may inhibit their own work, or may cast a bad light upon the county, and, you know, where folks may not be doing what we have contracted them to do, and how that impacts our bottom line, and it impacts our negotiations and everything else. So, I'm grateful that this is coming forward, that you all will be able to wrap your arms around some of those issues. I also appreciate the Subcommittee's intent to bring more contracts to small local businesses. This is an effort that's near and dear to my heart, so thank you for recognizing the fact that small businesses enrich and make up so much of our county. So, we must prioritize bringing them to the table. So, thank you again for this board letter and the amendments. I'm happy to support the item.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you Ma'am Chair, appreciate it. I appreciate the intent of wanting to look at and look at our contracts and see where we can do better. But I've consistently voted against ad hoc subcommittees, because I don't feel that they're transparent enough, and they leave highly technical issues to politicians instead of the professionals. We're policymakers. We're not the fiscal or contract experts. If we really want to do, conduct a review of our contracts and agreements, we should utilize our professional staff. They're extremely knowledgeable, and I think they're very qualified to do this work. Or we could hire an outside consultant who specializes in contract efficiencies and have, and have them come back with their findings and recommendations. And I appreciate my colleagues, Supervisor Anderson and Aguirre, you know, bringing this forward, but I just don't think it's the, we're policymakers. We're not the ones that should be delving into the weeds. A couple of the, of the recommendations came, kind of stood out to me, recommendation F, it says, "Review existing county revenue agreements and determine if renegotiations are appropriate to enhance revenue to the county." So, are we gonna have two supervisors decide that we should renegotiate a contract? It doesn't say anywhere in this item and any of the recommendations that it would come back to the board. Item G, "Work with the CAO to identify any changes in the county contracting policy," which should come back to the board. "Standards or practices that could increase competition, improve service outcomes, and enhance revenue for future procurement submittals and awarding contracts." Again, these are great ideas, but they need to come back to the board. And nowhere in here does it say, "Come back to the board with these potential recommendations or determinations made by the ad hoc committee." So, I'm not gonna be supporting the item. I think the idea is great. I think we should be looking at this. But I'd almost rather hire an outside firm to go in and look at that and dig into, see what efficiencies they could find. No offense to my colleagues, but I just don't, I like the idea, but I just, the approach... No offense to my colleagues, but I just don't, I like the idea, but I just, the approach in not coming back to the board is troubling for me. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. I'll just say a couple last words. Again, I think it's really important for us to be looking for all of our cost savings. It's, you know, we have to be good stewards of the taxpayer money that we're entrusted with. And, you know, we need to be thinking every single day about how to ensure that people get the highest quality services at a price that's reasonable. And so I think that this is an important effort. I also want to just say a couple words about some other pieces that aren't just focused on cost savings, but really appreciate the acknowledgement about, you know, looking at efficiencies that could be potentially gained through insourcing. I think that your amendment regarding sustainability and equity is really important because we've been doing a lot of work for the last few years on ensuring that we're really looking at service quality and not just price in all of our contracts. And I want to, I appreciate that, that that is going to be more centered with the amendment. And, you know, to my colleague Supervisor Desmond's comments, I agree, it's a difficult and time-consuming task to review all the contracts, but I have great faith in my colleagues and appreciate their willingness to take on that tedious endeavor. And I do trust that, I know that we can't, they cannot make policy changes on their own. Any policy changes have to come back to the board legally. So I am sure that if they come up with some good policies, they will be reporting back to us so we can vote on implementing them. They have to. They can't do it otherwise. So I think that's, that's built into the nature of how subcommittees operate. So hope you all come back to us with some good policies, and thank you. And if seeing no further comments, go ahead.
I'll just add that obviously, you know, Supervisor Anderson and I are going to do this without additional pay. So we're actually saving money on having us be the subcommittee, further money. So I think we're in unprecedented times, and I think we need to have an all-hands-on-deck approach and look under every single stone because we have never faced the storm that is on our doorstep that has been brought about by this administration. So very much looking forward to doing the work with Supervisor Anderson, and thank you all for your comments.
Okay. With that, we will have a vote. Go ahead, Andrew.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes. So Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. We'll move on to item 22, Transparency and Accountability Audit of Homelessness Spending Regionwide.
Can I just briefly introduce it? Okay, thank you. So I brought forward a request for the county to explore a region-wide audit to account for the annual homeless-related spending regionwide as a first step in advancing transparency and accountability in our region-wide homelessness response. The California State Auditor reported, released a report last year titled, "Homelessness in California: The State Must Do More to Assess the Cost Effectiveness of Homeless Programs." The report found more than $24 billion were spent statewide on homelessness, on homelessness between 2018 and 2023. The report concluded that the lack of oversight, transparency, and measurable outcomes is preventing meaningful progress. So all is a request to explore a region-wide audit and come back with a report. So with that, I'll have more comments afterwards, after speakers.
Okay, thank you. There's a brief switch, so we'll go to public comment now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery, step. We have 13 requests to speak on this item, four in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that for this item, we received two comments, one in support and one in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 22 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra, Natalie Raschke, Brendan Loloffs, and Shane Harris. If I've called your name, please come forward. You have one minute to address the board since there are 10 or more speakers on this item.
Again, there's, it's going to do nothing. And Elizabeth, since you're a child trafficker, we know that that's going to continue and that you will never have accountability for the money you guys spend because that's why you engage with NGOs, nefarious gangster operations. So there is no accountability so that you can go like when SBCS got $6 million for the illegal invasion to create a transfer site. They spent $2 million of that on their employees. So whatever they report back to you is going to be a bunch of nonsense because you guys don't ask further questions like, how many plane tickets did you get? How many meals did you provide for the money that you were spending on it? So it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. This is a homeless industrial complex, just like the child trafficking industrial complex, just like seniors. It's like everything that you guys deal with. You exploit people so that you can make money and put money into the pockets of people who are very nefarious. So this isn't going to do anything just like you guys.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, or final call for Natalie Raschke, Brendan Loloffs, and Shane Harris. Not seeing those individuals in the chamber. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Oh, no. This is a great idea. You could have the auditors flag money wasted on expensive housing, bogus shelters, housing with so little for the homeless and low-income, endless extensions, time to build, sites which cause community issues, and so on. For instance, you could build cheaper housing, which is quicker to build, 3D-printed, tiny homes, shipping crates homes, maybe Adobe homes, as we keep telling you over and over. These would not only be cheaper, but they'd also keep up with the market for new homes better instead of houses that might not be built for years and increase the waiting list. By the time they're all built, there might be an oversupply because of all of people fleeing the state. So I mean, you know.
Now hear from the next caller.
Okay, so item 22, Transparency and Accountability Audit, la-la-la, okay. Sounds good. Sounds like a good idea. And it's, I swear to God, it's like watching Groundhog Day. Every single year, the same issues come up, the same waste, the same expensive housing projects that do little for the people who need it most. Auditors can flag money wasted on costly shelters or housing that takes years to build while cheaper, faster, and more efficient housing solutions that are repeatedly ignored like Paul just mentioned, Adobe, tiny homes, shipping crates, la-la-la, all that stuff. Solutions the public keeps offering, as I mentioned, over and over, yet you stray from what's affordable, what's logical, and what actually works. Because hardly anyone speaks up or challenges you. You continue to get away with fraud, waste, conflicts of interest, and corruption, all unaccountable, with real damage, with the real damage you left, you leave in your wake. So you don't deserve the public's input, actually. You serve an agenda, and it is all, as I've.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
Hey, it's truth. You know, this is pure hypocrisy, rejecting an independent audit of the overall spending while calling for transparency and accountability in the homelessness spending. So I'm actually expecting a no vote because, you know, Jim put it forward, anytime he puts something forward, it's going to be a no, right? The most effective method to reduce homelessness, cut off all government funding to both this board as well as their fellow career grifters, the NGO profiteers. Confiscate the homes by corrupt, parasitic politicians like Manuela and give them to those who will actually do good in the community like myself. And then lock up all of these career grifters permanently. An independent audit is overdue on the $24 billion in state funding on homelessness. What's needed is accountability and transparency on who's being giving our money? Why? What's the goal and the metric? What's the long-term plan again? Do you guys even know why only 1% of families are homeless, yet 46% of individuals are homeless? It's because government refuses to aid middle-class families. You can only get help if you're single and homeless and make nothing. That's the root cause of homelessness being exacerbated in this.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Good afternoon, supervisors. John Brady, lived experience advisors. We are one of the only independent lived experience homelessness agencies out in the country. As such, we get calls all the time from people that are struggling within the system. They're struggling with service providers that do not understand what services that they're supposed to be serving. They're struggling with new case managers that have not been trained or have the experience to resolve their situation. They struggle with misinformation. There's nowhere for them to call. If we really want to get to understand this problem, we need to start listening to our customers. And we also have a proposal in front of you. We need to implement AI-driven augmented case management that is overseen by experienced folks that are in our system that understand how to resolve complex cases. I urge you to move both of these forward. We have a grant application in, in front of all of you. We need to listen to our customers directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Montgomery, step. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much. I'll turn it back over to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On homelessness, we still see, we still see failures in our streets and our parks and our neighborhoods, just driving, driving through town. We see these failures every year where hundreds of homelessness die on our, on our streets. Taxpayers see these failures, and they're frustrated with the, and we continue to pour billions of dollars and not really seeing measurable progress, as, as was put out by the California State Auditor. The county has made strides, though, in increasing our transparency. In just a couple of months, we'll be launching a public-facing dashboard that will had display key data, including numbers of homelessness in the unincorporated area, and how many individuals are on county programs, and such as a, and things such as our motel voucher program. And the report, the proposed report back, I'm hoping is going to include options for an audit, potentially, including barriers to accessing information, possible opportunities to collaborate with other entities to achieve this goal of transparent accounting of all homeless, homelessness dollars that are spent in the region. And I think this is just a first step. If we can follow the money, we can find out where progress has been made and where it hasn't. Once we have access to this information, we got to ask more important questions of, okay, what's been working? What hasn't been working? Why should the taxpayers continue to fund, fund the programs that are not effective? So really, this is just kind of drilling down, looking at the billions of dollars that is spent just in our region locally, and to answer these questions and trying to solve homelessness here in San Diego County. What works and what doesn't? And until we really have an audit of how this money is being spent here in San Diego County, and we know there's a whole lot of different entities, there's a county itself, there's cities, dollars, there's also nonprofits, dollars. What is making the biggest difference and the biggest impact is really what I'm trying to go for. So I would like to move this item forward to have the CAO report back with options for an audit that could be a collaborative effort with other entities to find out where the homeless dollars are being spent and how they're best used in San Diego County.
Okay. I don't see any of my, my other colleagues on the lights for now. I would say, I know Supervisor, earlier this year, you had brought something forward, and it was kind of specific to the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, saying it wasn't providing data that was specific enough for unincorporated areas. And so I supported you on that request to change how some of those numbers are being reported. I wanted to ask you, because my only issue is with this particular item, is that we have nonprofits underway that are, and I think there's one lead, but they're conducting a region-wide analysis that we should see at the beginning of the year. How, how would this correlate with that? Because if I'm not, if I'm understanding it right, the county is working on that right now already.
Well, I understand there's a foundation that's doing something similar right now, and the county's working with them. However, they're not ready to be public with that information yet, and I don't know exactly what their, their work would entail. This would be driven by us here. Once we, this is just a feasibility report of doing it, and maybe it comes back that we shouldn't do it, or we haven't, or we're duplicating efforts. But I do know that the other foundations, they're not public foundations, and so they don't have to provide all their information. So if we speak with their teams and include them in the recommendations for the ones that are, are doing it internally, I think that could be an added benefit to the report.
Okay. Well, let me chew on that a little bit, and I'll turn it over to Chair Proton McGarry.
Okay.
Thank you. My question's along those lines. If, if we don't have jurisdiction over a city of San Diego or non-county providers, how do we compel them to give us the information?
Well, I think we can't force anybody into giving information, but some cities will. I know in my district, the city of Vista has been very out and vocal and forward. And if we can't learn, you know, from, let's get the information that we can. And I would think it would be in the best interest for the city of San Diego, any city, to give us their information so that we can, okay, how do we work it together and collaborate better with this instead of being in our silos with dollars and things like that? So we, I think the only compelling thing is, is we collectively are trying to find out the best means and where we have been most successful and where we haven't.
And this would build on the Deloitte report that we had in 2024, correct?
I'm not, I don't have all the specifics about that report, but this would be our own in-house.
No, this was a county one. It was a, let me, I can get the name for it right now. It was the.
And I got to tell you, it's just last year's, last year's report for the California State Auditor, it said they, they weren't able to, there was lack of oversight, lack of transparency, and lack of measurable outcomes from the money that's been spent in California. So I'm not familiar with the outcomes of that, that study was.
Enterprise-wide homelessness assessment, county of San Diego, November 2024.
What's the title? And what came out of it was, I mean, are these dollars accounted for in that?
That's a pretty broad.
Well, maybe if that's already been done, and it, staff comes back with, all I'm asking for is a report back. And it says, hey, we've already done it. See you later. Or we can expand on it and work with other cities and communities.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not trying to be too, too prescriptive of it, but when we get reports that they can't find $24 billion in the state, it's like, we've got to do better. So that's, I'm not, not trying to usurp or step on anybody's toes, but if we can check the feasibility of doing the report, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion. I think because the recommendations are fairly broad, I think, is it okay that the direction that provided this passes the direction here to, you know, and provide the, I guess, consider the Deloitte analysis along with some of the other, possibly the foundation that's working on this comprehensive analysis as well to determine what more we need to do as a county when it comes back? Is that, do we need to include that in a, in a motion and a recommendation? Or is it pretty clear what we would like to see? If it's okay with you, Supervisor.
Yeah, that's all. Common sense language.
Okay.
I think that would be what you'd become forward with anyway.
And just to confirm with the Vice Chair, yes, it's clear. Supervisor Desmond, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And do I have a second for the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and if there is no further discussion, we can go ahead and call the vote.
Vice Chair Montgomery, step. That motion passes with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number 23, "Receive an Update on the Homelessness Outreach and Services Pilot Program in Lemon Grove." I would like to hand the floor over to our county team for a presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. On August 27th, 2024, your board directed the chief administrative officer to develop and launch a pilot program to expand homeless outreach and services within the city of Lemon Grove and report back to the board on the outcomes, data, and effectiveness. The pilot program replicated the county's outreach efforts in the unincorporated areas and aimed to improve access to critical homelessness services, including housing navigation, financial support, employment services, and behavioral health care. Today's item presents an update and recommended next steps for the pilot program, which supports our framework for ending homelessness and aligns with the Live Well San Diego vision by supporting the housing needs of. by supporting the housing needs of vulnerable people across our region. I am joined by Deanna Beck, Director for the Housing, excuse me, for the Office of Homeless Solutions, to provide the details of this item.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Based on the board's direction, the Office of Homeless Solutions launched the homelessness outreach and services pilot program in Lemon Grove, or pilot program, in October 2024. The pilot program was built off of the success of current homeless outreach efforts in unincorporated communities and in partnership with City of Lemon Grove and community service providers. The pilot program's outreach team is a multidisciplinary team comprised of outreach staff to connect individuals to self-sufficiency programs and social workers who assist individuals with ongoing case management services, housing navigation, and support services on their path to stability and housing. Additionally, through the pilot program, individuals are provided access to other county services, including behavioral health or public health. During the pilot, the outreach team created and maintained a by-name list, which is a tool used to assess the needs of people experiencing homelessness, either in a geographic area or by subpopulation. The by-name list helps provide focused efforts to prioritize resources that are scarce and to design interventions that are personalized based on people's needs. A 12-month assessment was completed for the pilot program utilizing data collected by the outreach team. Outcomes of the assessment demonstrated the meaningful impacts were made by establishing trust and initiating engagements with individuals experiencing homelessness in Lemon Grove, many of whom had not previously engaged with any service providers. Through consistent outreach over 12 months, the team engaged 181 unique individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Of those, half were eligible but not connected to self-sufficiency programs such as Medi-Cal, CalFresh, CalWorks, and General Relief. Our team completed applications in the field and ensured that 91 individuals were subsequently connected to these essential resources such as food, medical care, and cash assistance. In addition to new applications, the team completed 237 other actions related to self-sufficiency programs to ensure that people who were already receiving benefits can continue receiving them without interruptions. The team also processed 99 referrals to supportive services, and nearly half of those were referrals to behavioral health services. Additionally, the team issued 341 hygiene kits to help prevent spread of communicable disease. Lastly, for 151 individuals, the social workers completed housing assessments and engaged the individuals in the process of housing navigation and case management, laying a strong foundation for long-term support. Social workers entered the completed housing assessments into the regional homeless management information system database so that individuals can enter a queue to be matched with available regional housing resources. For many, this is the first step to permanent housing and stability. The pilot program assessment identified that the greatest barrier to housing stability was limited emergency and permanent housing options within City of Lemon Grove. Due to the limited resources, it is important that jurisdictions work together to apply for available funding and maximize the resources. As a great example of collaboration during the pilot program, the City of Lemon Grove partnered with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, or RTFH, with support from Caltrans to apply for a state encampment resolution funding grant. This effort was successful resulting in an $8 million grant from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. This funding enabled delivery of much-needed emergency and permanent housing resources, which are estimated to serve approximately 170 individuals within the Lemon Grove area. As of August 2025, the City of Lemon Grove and the RTFH have deployed this funding within their jurisdiction through outreach, emergency, and permanent housing resources. As the city and RTFH are positioned in advancing these efforts and providing housing resources for people experiencing homelessness in their jurisdiction, they will continue to lead these efforts. While the pilot program formally concluded in October 2025, the county continues its partnership with the city and RTFH in a supporting role by connecting people experiencing homelessness to vital county services and sharing the by-name list data gathered with the new service provider. The city, county, and RTFH teams continue to work together in an efficient transition to ensure the continuity of services. Today's recommendation for the board is to receive this update on the homelessness outreach and services pilot program in Lemon Grove. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm sure we'll have some comments and questions, but before that, let's go over to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp. We have 12 requests to speak on this item, four in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received one e-comment in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 23 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Cesar Javier, allegedly Audra, Natalie Rashke, and Brendan Loloffs. If I've called your name, please come forward. You'll have one minute to address the board since there are 10 or more speakers on this item.
No, there isn't, and you keep disenfranchising people because of that. Anyway, homelessness is a business. It's never going to be taken care of. You guys engage with people or entities like Dreams for Change, who in their safe sleeping programs, 23 people have died, sexual assaults have happened, they're all being omitted and obfuscated and hidden from public. And, you know, encouragement to not have victims report to the police. So you guys engage with entities that do nothing to help people. In fact, they go through caseworker after caseworker trying to get housing, and they can't because they switch so often. And as you said in your report, there's no resources to help these peoples. You guys sit here and you make money off exploiting the fact that people are suffering, and you talk about lost revenue. You don't talk about more people being in the need for help. You talk about money that you've lost. So you don't care about the people, because if you did, the problem would get better. But that's not the way the business works. So you guys are doing very well destroying everyone's lives in San Diego.
Thank you. Final call for Cesar Javier, Natalie Rashke, and Brendan Loloffs. Not seeing those individuals in the chamber, or not hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Paul LaBeau, nice report. Minor improvements, not much to show, but anyway, it sounds like sports services in Lemon Grove were as an actual rehousing. Last we heard was that they were too busy pushing for Lemon Grove non-congruent shelters ident antagonizing and disregarding the locals to actually secure the land before building on it. And the site was within a few hundred yards of a school, clinic, and a liquor store, also next to a busy freeway. You want a sort of facility for recovering drug, recovering drugies or drunks there? This has got to earn some kind of PBP award, PIS for planning, but I'm glad you admit that. There's a bit of moral character I hope can be applied to all other abuse in county facilities and that the county...
We'll hear from the next caller.
From Swallow, oh yeah, you're really going to end homelessness. Dream on. The county and Lemon Grove officials, recall, Snow, have ignored residences' warnings next to a school, clinic, liquor store, and busy freeway, as Paul mentioned. You pushed ahead anyway. It's reckless. You continue to do what the people don't want, showing the same disregard for safety, community, and common sense that we see across the county. Residents of Lemon Grove, San Diego County, take note. This is proof that the board and local governments are not serving you. Again, they are serving an agenda, moving in lockstep, dismissing the voices of the people they claim to represent. Hey, hey, ho, ho, Allison Snow has got to go. Hey, hey, ho, ho. Recall, no. Suckers.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Here's where metrics requirements would have come in handy with the sport spending of our tax dollars. What was this program supposed to achieve? In Lemon Grove, the county has a graffiti and a lockstone and Narcan vending machine that they denied having until I proved it. From October 2024 to August 2025, the use has consisted of 112 lockstone kits and 630 Fentanyl test strips. Great solution. Giving the city a part of an $8.4 billion grant as a kickback bribe for colluding between Monica and Allison Snow does not equate to real solutions for homelessness. Everybody in Lemon Grove knows what went down with this dirty deal. When the county couldn't destroy Santee, they went for Spring Valley. When they couldn't destroy Spring Valley, they settled for destroying Lemon Grove. Nora only backed out on the Spring Valley shelter deal as counter retaliation for her own progressive party ousting her with a crummy replacement Nora 2.0, known as Manwella. Then Caltrans suddenly changed the timeframe for this land use, and the county is scrambling again. Government only helps those who refuse to be part of a permanent solution because there's incentives to stay homeless because the NGO profiteers get rich, the homelessness industrial complex.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
John Brady with Live Experience Advisors. I want to congratulate the team that worked on this project. This is an example of what can happen when you apply the right amount of money and the right team of people to resolve a group of people's homeless experience. I will point out that this costs about 50, over $50,000 per individual served in addition to the regular services or housing vouchers that might have been available. This is really what can happen when the right amount of resources are applied, and this is what we should be looking at in terms of what it costs to resolve homelessness, particularly chronic homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you so much, and thank you to staff for updating the presentation at the close of the pilot. I'm very proud of what we have been able to accomplish here. This was the first county-led outreach of its kind in Lemon Grove, and the results really speak for themselves. These results show that intentional community engagement, it does work, and that Lemon Grove's ability to secure significant state grant funding to expand homelessness outreach is a direct reflection of the foundation of this pilot that was created here. It demonstrates that when we show measurable progress, additional resources can follow. It's worth remembering that all of our efforts, even the more controversial ones, operate on the same model. Early success brings additional resources, and those resources create more progress. And so that's how the small pilots become large-scale solutions. So this is something that is not, is no longer going to come out of the county's budget, but that the state was able to come in and pick up. So, and then, you know, I do want to address some of the numbers here. Some of them are good, some of them, you know, like, for example, people moving into permanent housing, it's a lower number. That's always our ultimate goal, but the reality is that we are dealing with a highly constrained housing market in San Diego. So that type of transfer into permanent housing, that outcome rarely happens at first contact. So this underscores the need for additional emergency and permanent housing options in Lemon Grove and throughout the region. In most cases, the pathway to housing begins with linking individuals to benefits and supportive services. The by-name list plays a critical role in enabling consistent follow-up and ongoing engagement. And this pilot program added 181 individuals to that by-name list, establishing a strong foundation for future progress. That's a significant achievement, especially, you know, using that by-name list to service people in the Lemon Grove community, which is something we heard from constituents in Lemon Grove, that they wanted people in Lemon Grove to be served if they were going to take on any type of resource, additional resources, or, for example, the tiny homes. So I'm pleased that the City of Lemon Grove and the Regional Task Force on Homelessness were awarded over $8 million by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, the encampment resolution funding, which we saw in the presentation, and that they are now implementing their own outreach services to provide housing resources for those experiencing homelessness in Lemon Grove. Proud of what the pilot program achieved. I look forward to seeing what additional progress that we can make together as the county remains a steadfast partner, providing the Lemon Grove community with links to vital county services, which are also listed. A lot of people signed up for Medi-Cal and CalFresh as well. So thank you for all of the work that you've done, and this is just a recommendation to receive the report, so I will move that recommendation and go to Chair Pro Tim McGarry.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm happy to second, and thank you for your leadership on this, and thanks, staff, for all of your work around this pilot project. All I have to say is, would love to see this replicated in high-need areas around the county. Obviously, each of our districts has challenges with this situation, and I think that this is a good example of what is possible without even having to dip into our general fund and getting funding from the state. So very happy and pleased with the results and would love to see them grow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. If there are no further questions or comments, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Clerk, please call the vote.
Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp, that motion passes with all Supervisors who are present voting aye.
Thank you so much. And let's go ahead and move to discussion item 25, providing direction on the future of county technology. There's a little bit of musical chairs here going on, but I'll hand the floor to the county team that will present on this item.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp and members of the board. I appreciate the time granted to share this presentation. My name is Eric Shiosugio. I'm the Acting Chief Information Officer for the county, and I'm here today to present on modernizing the enterprise resource planning suite of applications, also known as the ERPs. Prior to 2002, the county was on the mainframe for the core applications that support the internal operations known as the ERPs. The county moved from mainframe to client-server architecture, which was a modernization at that time. Since then, the county's performed upgrades on each application every five years to stay current and supported and still currently running on the same solutions for over two decades. Today, the county is looking at another step to modernizing the ERPs we have. In addition to modernization, we're looking at consolidating to a single software as a service to gain efficiencies, user experience, and lower operating costs. The objective is to ensure the ERPs are up to date, remove complex integrations by obtaining a single application, increase efficiencies, lower annual costs by moving to software as a service, removing risk of finding experts in an aging, deprecated technology, eliminating risks of legacy support in the environments, getting ahead of the elimination of the data center, and increase the user experience in a modern application. The county ERP systems currently relies on multiple best-of-breed applications to manage core functions like financials, HR, payroll, timekeeping, and recruitment. While this approach has served us well, maintaining these separate systems has become increasingly complex and costly. Our goal now is to consolidate into a single software as a service platform to reduce upgrade costs and complexity while improving efficiency. This transformation will involve all county departments, as each manages its own finances, HR, and timekeeping. Key stakeholders, including the auto controller, human resources, purchasing, contracting, and financial planning, will play a critical role in the program's success. To assess potential costs, we ran three cost scenarios. As-is, meaning if we just continue to do what we do today. Delay upgrade, which is a scenario if we didn't do the program now and pushed it out five years. And modernization project, if we get the approval to proceed. The costs are calculated, a 10-year total cost of ownership with all variables, including actual costs, potential costs, and cost avoidance. These scenarios are all estimations that will be revisited in detail when we get the actual proposals with pricing. This endeavor has its risks that drives the cost. Some key factors are moving from on-prem to software as a service, if timeline extends or needs to be longer, phased approach or single-go-live, if we go past December 2028 and need to extend the data center, current systems extended support, and subject matter experts' availability internally and externally. These are just some of the risk factors that we need to monitor closely to manage through. To properly prepare, the county needed to do research and analysis. The teams have performed a request for information to understand what is available and what there is, what viable solutions to meet the objectives that we are seeking. We spoke with dozens of entities that have done the same thing or similar and obtained lots of lessons learned and information that will be helpful. We engaged Gartner for independent guidance on approach for validations of our strategy, worked with key stakeholder departments to create the requirements and statement of work, and finally drafted the request for a proposal that has been reviewed by all required parties. The recommendation before your board request, your board, excuse me, request... The recommendation before your board requests, your board, excuse me, requests the authorization to issue a competitive solicitation for the county ERPs and upon successful negotiation, award a three-year contract and identify funding within fiscal year 2627. The recommendation also requests the board approval to conduct a feasibility study of the new ERP system's replacement. If found to have positive return, then add to the 2627 op plan and subject to the approval of the chief financial officer. Subject to your questions, this concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Let's go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery, step. We have eight requests to speak on this item, three in person and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received one e-comment in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 25 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Cesar Javier, allegedly Audra, and Natalie Rashke. You'll have two minutes to address the board and I'll ask you to state your name for the audio record.
Look at that, two minutes. Interesting. It's interesting to listen to you guys and then read what you write. You want to have a single source of truth, single source, as long as you guys are the gatekeepers of information, you can shape reality and paint a picture that everything is going really well, that you guys aren't trafficking children, that you're actually helping the homeless, that you help animals out, that, you know, the elderly are not suffering, you're not taking their homes and giving them to that nice little tax collector, that you guys just were, you know, virtue signaling and gratifying earlier, giving your little circle jerks like you guys like to do.
Stop our time just for a little bit.
Oh, my gosh.
Here we go. The item is Modernized County Enterprise Resource Planning Suite of Applications. So if you could just stick to that, you just stick to the item. I appreciate it.
Okay. Monica, thank you. Yeah. It says it right here. Did you read it? Did you see that it says "single source of truth"? Is that, am I, oh, go ahead, right? Just keep going. Right. Thank you, Monica. You're being paid so well to be a gatekeeper as well. Yes, you're complicit in all the crimes against humanity in the county. And you like to silence people, you like to encourage people to traffic children, all of the things. And you guys want to sit here and act like modernizing any of this is going to help anybody? Right. You can keep up with your attitude. It's fine. You've already threatened me to be careful, right? And that's okay for you to do. Right. And then you want to silence people and take up their time. Right. Because you're such a strong Christian woman, right? Who likes to rip babies apart limb by limb. So, yeah, anything you guys are going to do to modernize anything and be a single source of truth means you are going to manipulate people on a continual basis to make them think that you guys actually care about them, when in reality you're destroying everyone's lives around you while you guys sit up here on a dais and go home to your nice little house while people are suffering because of the choices you fucking made.
Thank you. Final call for Cesar Javier or Natalie Rashke. Not seeing those individuals. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Hi, I'm Paul the Bold. I guess I'll be able to begin my comments if I can finish them. Good, it's good that you want competitive solicitations. However, the recommendations in your board letter make it clear that more planning has to be done before you issue any solicitation. Recommendation one is to issue solicitation for new enterprise resource planning, or ERP, but recommendation two is to do a cost feasibility study. So, I mean, speak of putting the cart before the horse. The board letter mentions costs of 40 mil per average ERP upgrade, then 55 mil for, you know, more programs, I guess. That's a huge difference, huge. So if you're unsure what you can afford, it's not a good idea to plunge ahead with a solicitation. I don't know why you'd even consider it, really. We have several years to go before the upgrades are actually necessary. So, you know, my suggestion would be to take one or two months, or maybe even longer if necessary, to get the real costs down, then issue the solicitations with a more realistic cost basis, otherwise you'd just be wasting our taxpayer money again. I mean, you know, it's like, why should we even pay taxes if you're just going to waste it on?
Now hear from the next caller.
I'm not, not sure on what item we're on. Can you please tell me? Terry, Andrew? I can call you Harry. Sorry. Andrew Putter.
We're on item 25.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Item 25. Okay, last item. Okay, shoot. You know what? I don't have anything on that, but you know what? I guess I can just take this time to address the behavior of Tara today while she's not here. And, you know, again, it's just disgusting.
Well, we stopped your time. The item is Modernized County Enterprise Resource Planning Suite of Applications. So I'll just ask you to stay on topic. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, I don't have anything set for this item, if you didn't listen. And, yeah, the behavior was disgusting from some of you members of the board today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank staff. We had some questions in advance and I appreciate all the answers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does any of my colleagues have anything else to comment or do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Montgomery, step. A second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay. Thank you. So now we'll move on to closed session. We'll begin with public comments.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. Item 26 on today's general legislative session agenda, as well as item one on the sanitation district agenda, includes nine matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on the closed session matters must provide comments related to the matters listed in the closed session agenda items. Otherwise, your comments will be considered off-topic. We have five requests to speak on these two items, one in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Those that requested to speak on the closed session matters by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speaker. You'll have two minutes to address the board. I'd like to invite forward allegedly Audra.
And here she is. She just shows up. Weird. Yes, anytime you're going to be talking about labor negotiations with child traffickers like county council here, right, David? Right. We should be cutting their pay, in fact, until they return all of the children that have been kidnapped, because until then, you guys are just funding this nice little organization. I mean, but you guys all profit off of it. So why would you stop it? You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's very beneficial to rip families apart, right? And then put kids through juvenile detention and things like that because it's very profitable, just like homelessness, just like, you know, elder abuse and probate and, you know, animal abuse, all of the very great things that you guys do for Satan. You know what I mean? Rip babies apart limb by limb. They're not really a baby yet until they, you know, make it out of that birth canal or just get cut open and then you just rip them out. Then they're alive. It's like only at that point. So I'm just wondering, when you guys are talking about age zero, what does that mean? Is that in the womb? Are we considering those babies only if you can profit off of them? Who knows? But, yeah, so, you know, even the district attorney, right? Her and her husband and her sister, you guys all have this like trifecta. It's great, all the people that protect you guys, isn't it? Like Soros, Tara. I mean, how great is it to be his little puppet? It's cool that you guys are puppets. Can't wait to bring in my puppet to show people a little visual of what you guys do. And Joel, you just like to speed things through. Let's just pass it. And then Tara's like, maybe we should read that first. Who knows, right? Why do we need to read it? It's like, just get the business done. We need our paychecks to come in. Doesn't matter. You guys can go home to your families, right? I know, it's tiring, huh, Paloma? Right? I know. It is when you guys are filled with evilness. Good job. Satan is so proud.
We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Hey, Paul the Bold. Bzayir, however you pronounce it. Sorry if I mangled it. A wrongful death, car crash, simple facts, better settle. Urgent aging. Two more cases on abuse in foster care. My God, foster care. Endorsements, Caesar, piling up. I see there's a threat to public services and facilities. Hope it's a real one and not just contrived or politically hyped like so many we've seen. Besides, the Arabella case where for four years the county ignored evidence of starvation, beating the fostered children is not, is good evidence that CWS and CPS need to be reformed. People need to be fired. The county needs settled. Don't sweep it under the rug. The county is apparently seeking permanent county council. Hopefully, he can prove read better than the last several incumbents. Then, two labor discussions you probably don't want us to know about, what they're about. And I hope you'll settle the 150 odd cases related to Polinsky Center abuses. How much will continually putting off discussion cost us in money endorse and a reputation of not having the books totally thrown at you? I really hope the screams of abused minors don't get loud enough that tourists of kids that arms length in the car hotel miss out on the fun. I mean, you know, that would be a shame. What do people come here for? They certainly don't come here to be put in foster care with someone from the border patrol who squashes them flat.
Thank you. We'll hear from the next caller.
And, let's see. Okay, so moving on to closed session, yeah, I really want to speak about what this board, this county and this system have allowed to happen. Children like Arabella McCormick suffered unimaginable abuse, starved, beaten, and neglected by those entrusted with her care. Her foster father, border patrol agent, again, her mother, foster mother, a worker at a church, not surprising, the Rock Church, all failed her and the system designed to protect her, Child Welfare CPS and Associated Agency, all failed her too. And so unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident and Arabella is a symbol of systematic failure. Time and again, complaints are ignored, oversight is weak, allegations are dismissed, bureaucracy becomes cover, and the children pay the ultimate price. Policies and programs exist on paper, but in reality, children continue to be harmed, abused, and in some cases even killed. Every agency, every worker, every policy that turns a blind eye contributes to this ongoing cycle. This is not just a moral failure, it is a legal and a societal failure. We cannot continue to hide behind procedures while children are left unprotected. The people of San Diego and the public watching will not forget. And we need full accountability, independent audits, honest investigations, and real consequences for those who failed these children. Transparency is not optional. Justice is not optional. The lives of these children demand it and so do we. Arabella's death and the abuse of countless others must serve as a wake-up call. The public expects action, not excuses. It is time for the agencies' responsibilities.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the final caller.
Hey, it's the final caller, also known as Truth and also known as the flamethrower, apparently our nickname today. Case S, Threat to Public Services and Facilities. Consultation with Security Officer and County Council. A security officer, not the sheriff's office, not Kelly, not banana. What expertise does some private security have? What expertise does Council clown David have? Is there some IT discussion going to happen? You're going to use the AI to stop people from entering the building? Or is a bulletproof wall going to be installed soon in front of the podium? There's already a strip search at all the entrances that deters people from entering a public building. What more do communist dictators want? No queen. Case E is Conference with Labor Negotiators. The purple shirts strong-arming our tax dollars makes you wonder who the real threat is. On labor negotiations, the LA Decarbonization MOU was all about giving campaign funders IBW a monopoly on the contract. Case H, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Why is San Diego Deputy Council, Council, County Council's association crossed out? Case G, Public Employee, County Council. It doesn't say performance evaluation, so hopefully that means a new county council. That'd be great. Besides, Tara's quid pro quo over goo, another example of something county councils failed to address. Elizabeth Hernandez was appointed to the First Five Commission for an unknown indefinite term, which is questionably legal, and you guys couldn't even spell commission correctly. So I request that micromanaging Monica start micromanaging the grammar in these agendas because county council has failed miserably. Also, happy veterans month. Thank you for continued public service, the complete opposite of the rest of the board's continued self-service. So have a wonderful day, Tara Manwella. I hope you heal from your physical and mental illnesses, but please do not show up to Sandag, Manwella. Thank you.
And Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on the closed session matters.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go to non-agenda public comment, just want to take a moment to ask if any of my colleagues have any updates or report on progress from board committee. Oh, you had something to say, David? Sorry. Apologies.
No worries. Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer and members of the board. Two items on today's closed session agenda will be withdrawn and considered at a future date. The first is item F, which is Conference with Labor Negotiators, and the second is item, I'm sorry, item E, and then item F, which is Threat to Public Services and Facilities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that being said, do any of my colleagues have any updates, progress reports, pertinent information regarding any of your committees that you serve on for this board? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to non-agenda public comment.
Thank you, Chair Lawson Reamer. We have six remaining requests to speak. A matter is not listed on the agenda. All of those requests coming by phone. For those individuals that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. Give the callers a moment to dial in. You'll have two minutes to address the board and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record.
My name is Abigail Sylvester and I'm speaking on behalf of the San Diego Chapter of the Sierra Club. I'm calling you today to urge the board to continue to prioritize efforts to address the ongoing sanitation and environmental crisis in the Tijuana River and its impact on San Diego communities. I first want to express appreciation for the progress that's been made so far towards implementing the goals outlined in July's memorandum of understanding for tangible improvement in infrastructure that have been made possible by the efforts of our local, state, federal, and bi-national partners. And while these advancements are a great start, the heavy rainfall this past weekend and and more to come later this week is a stark reminder of the inflated impact flooding of the contaminated system like the Tijuana River has on our local communities. Beyond the significant economic and infrastructure impacts, residents across the county face serious health risks. Those closest to the floodwaters experience spikes in gastrointestinal illnesses linked to water contamination, while respiratory issues from contaminants that become airborne as floodplains soil drives can impact residents far beyond the riverbeds. People who live and visit the areas around the Tijuana River deserve a sustained, proactive, and transparent response to these issues. We ask that you continue to expand on and fortify facilities to clean in and around the river. Develop more legally binding agreements and action plans that will follow Minute 328 and assuring the proper funding is secure for these projects. This is a public health emergency, just as much as it is an ecological one. The Sierra Club believes that everyone deserves clean air and clean water 365 days a year, and we will not stop advocating until all residents of this region have access to that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Lawson Reamer, not seeing any individuals in the queue. That concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will now proceed with our adjournments in memory. This is adjournment will presented by Supervisor Desmond in memory of Sal Angi.
Yes. This is an adjournment memory of the Oceanside veteran Salvatore Sal Ange. Salvador Ange, he was 92 years old from Oceanside. He passed away on October 22nd, 2025 after a brief battle with cancer. He was born in Brooklyn in 1933. Sal graduated from Brooklyn Tech, where he proudly served in the United States Air Force as an aeronautical engineer and a B-29 navigator during the Korean conflict. After his honorable discharge, he began a 40-year civil service career with the Navy in Port Guanimi, California. He retired as a general management level 15 contracts manager and received numerous meritorious service awards. Sal, Sal was busy. Sal married his first wife, Dorothy, in 1955, and he raised five children. He married Eileen in 1976. In 2003, he married Carolyn, for whom he spent his 22 joyful years in Oceanside, traveling, dancing, and enjoying jazz and Sinatra. He loved fishing, football, jazz, golf, barbecuing, aviation, and weekly virtual gaming with his son, Chris. Sal also served his community as a football referee and as a historian for the Navy Service Welfare Center Alumni Association. He proudly served as an usher and a fourth-degree knight with the Knights of Columbus. His faith was central to his life. He is survived by his wife Carolyn, his children, extended family, many grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Sal will be remembered for his dedication, kindness, faith, and deep love for his family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. So, with that, our board will be, will be heading into closed session. We will then return here tomorrow, November 5th, at 9:00 a.m. for the land use legislative session.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 26 on today's session agenda and item 1 on the sanitation district agenda. If there are any reportable actions, it would be reported out during the land use session at this meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 19th, 2025.